Yeah, but maybe for-
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum? Whenever you-
Oh, I'm sorry. Keep going deaf. I'm very sorry. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell. Siomo. Counselor Asabi George. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Lamatina.
Here.
Counsel Linehan. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Presley. Counsel Wu.
Present.
And Counsel Zakem. Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
At this time, I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise, and I will turn over the microphone to Counsel Lamatina to introduce our faith leader for the day. After the invocation is delivered, please remain standing, and Counsel Lamatina will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon. Today's my honor to welcome Chaplain Joseph LaGrippo, who I have known for many, many years. My wife thinks he's like the most handsome guy in the city. But he's a- His family's a longtime Bostonian, from Dorchester and the North End. His father had a stand at Haymarket for many years and downtown Boston. Chaplain LaGrippo lives in Childstown, Mass., and he's an active member of his community throughout the metro area, participating in various charitable organizations. He is a Iraq veteran who served two tours of duty with the United States Marine Corps. He's a member of various veterans and disabled veterans organizations, such as the DAV, Wounded Vet Run, Wounded Warrior Project, and the Mass General Hospital Red Sox Home Base Program. He serves insurance ministry assistant under privileged children in Roxbury, Michigan Housing Project, as well as Operation Home Front. Moreover, he is an ordained chaplain with the International Fellowship of Chaplains. He works very closely with the Boston Police Department Command Staff and his local and state officials. I got to know Joe really well the last couple of years. As you know, we do the peace marches throughout the city. And Joe's always at the peace marches in East Boston and some of your neighborhoods, too. So Joe's been featured in the Boston Globe, community newspapers, for his dedication and peace and crime prevention. So Joe, welcome to the Boston-
Thank you, Counsel Lamatina. And thank you, Madam President, and thank you, council members. It's a great honor for me to be here today in this hallowed chamber amongst you and some of the residents of the city as well. I want to first off thank Sal for his service and for what he does for our neighborhoods. We're very grateful and we're very sad to see him go. Before I make a few remarks, I'd like to take a moment of silence for a friend of mine, who many of you know. He was the former council president, James Kelly, who was a very dear friend of my family's. And I'd like to just start with a moment of silence. Thank you. So our city's motto is "God be with us before as He was with our fathers." I'm not great at the Latin, but I think it's "Secut patribus sit deus nobis." And it's very important to know that God has always been present in our city since the early 1600s, at the formation of this city, at the formation of this council in the early 1900s. And we've always placed our trust and sought God's direction and His protection. It has served us well. If you have seen other cities across our country and across the world, there's a reason why Boston is the way it is. And we've also- God has given us His instruction and guidance. For example, the Bible is very clear that we should honor and submit to all those that govern us. And I'm going to read from Romans. It says, "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God; and those that exist have been instituted by God. Therefore, whoever resists the authorities resists what God has appointed." So as elected officials, I'm here to tell you, you were appointed far, far before you were ever elected. And that's important to note. And if you're appointed, what do you do with this? I mean, your job per se is huge, to uphold and protect the city and the public trust. And what an awesome responsibility. And I'm very grateful for your service to your constituents and to the neighborhoods in which you represent. Furthermore, God offers guidance through Ephesians. And He says here, "It is by grace you have been saved through faith." And this is not from yourselves, this is a gift, a gift from God. And it's not by works that you can boast, for we are God's handiwork. We were created in Christ to do good things. And all the good things that we do were prepared for us, before us, in God. So do good works and be a good servant to our city. And to be a good servant, as we all know, it takes love in your heart. And it's love for the city and it's love for the people. And Jesus' most important commandment was that, it comes in John. It says, "A new commandment that I give to you, that you love one another, as God has loved you; and you will know that they are my children by the love that they show each other and the love they have in their hearts for each other." So as we know, things were created to be used, and people were created to be loved. So love unconditionally is what I challenge you today. And in closing, if God is for us, who can be against us? It's one of my favorite verses in the Bible. If God is for us, who can be against us? And my prayer for this council is to remember that God is always with you. And I ask that you lean on Him and not your own strength. And when you can't, you know that He can. And when things are down, you simply just look up. So I'm going to leave you with these three thoughts. You were appointed long before you were ever elected. You were created in Christ to do good works and to serve our city. And I ask that you love one another and you work together for the betterment of our city. So we ask the Lord today for peace, prosperity, discernment, and love. And in the name of the Lord Jesus, may God bless this esteemed council and our city. Thank you all, and God bless. Madam President, thank you.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, could you please note that Counsel Siomo and Counsel Jackson are present? We'll start with approval of the minutes from last week's meeting. Are there any changes or amendments? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. And on to communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 0695, message and order approving the appropriation of $4,400,000 from the income of the 21st Century Fund, also known as the Public Educational or Governmental Access and Cable Related Fund in support of public educational and government access.
Docket 0695 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0696, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $33,931 awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, be administered by the Environment Department for the Climate Ready Boston Community Leader Program.
Docket 0696 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment and Sustainability. Reports of public officers and others.
And I'll read all of them together, Madam President.
Yes, all of these together, please, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0697, notice to receive from the mayor of the appointment of Richard D. Piano as temporary First Assistant Collector-Treasurer for a period of 60 days effective May 2, 2017. Docket number 0698, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Anthony Delo Iacona as temporary Second Assistant Collector-Treasurer for a period of 60 days effective May 2, 2017. Docket number 0699, communication from Counsel Lamatina regarding recommendations from the Boston City Council Transportation Policy Briefing Series. And docket number 0700, communication was received from Counsel Andrea J. Campbell that the Louis D. Brown Peace Institute has no business before the city of Boston or the Boston City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. My mistake. All of these items will be placed on file, but I believe Counsel Lamatina wishes to speak on docket 0699. So we'll place 0697, 0698, and 0700 on file. And Counsel Lamatina, as Chair of the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just briefly, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, Madam President, for organizing this first briefing on transportation. In your packet, you will see this Transportation Policy Briefing Series, and we have a report from the committee, from the president. And really look at it, there's some really good recommendations, working with Northeastern Professor for some of the issues that impact us in our neighborhoods. So with that, Madam President, I don't know if you want to add something, but I want to thank you because I thought it was very informative. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lamatina, and thank you for chairing all the sessions. As mentioned, we had five great briefings. Those are the summaries, and you can go back and watch the video as well. But wonderful recommendations and really appreciate your time, Counsel Lamatina. The docket 0699 will be placed on file as well. Reports of committees.
Docket number 0561, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 12, 2017, docket number 0561. Message and order authorizing the appropriations of $1,200,000 from the income of the George Francis Parkman Fund. Excuse me. The funds are to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation for the maintenance and improvement of the Boston Common and Parks in existence since January 12, 1887. Submit to report recommending the order of the path.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Siomo.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an annual appropriation, as aforementioned, the George Parkman Fund. We withdraw about 5% interest from that fund. This year's appropriation is 1.2 million. It goes to the maintenance and upkeep of the Parkman-supported parks, which include the Boston Common, the Public Garden, the Fens, Highland Park, Horatio Harris Park, and Malcolm X Park. These funds will also support Tupac Ranger positions and to fund necessary maintenance, improvement, and preservation of our most historic and aging parks. But recommend we pass this today.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. At this time, Counsel Siomo moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0561. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Ayes have it, docket 0561 has been passed. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0106, message and order approving a home rule petition to the General Court entitled "Petition for a Special Law Regarding the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act."
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a follow-up to a six-hour-long hearing we held back in March. We had a working session on Monday, May 8. In attendance were many of our colleagues, along with Sheila Dillon on behalf of the administration, along with a whole host of proponents and opponents. There was consensus there that the information and the education piece was something that folks wanted to move forward, along with the data collection piece. There was a question that came up with regards to whether or not we could move forward on the data collection piece via an ordinance and then keep the notice and the education piece separate in the home rule petition and/or whether we could do one ordinance, including all three of them, et cetera. So as Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I'd like to keep that matter in committee based on issues that were brought up at the working session and identify, working through our staff counsel, Christine O'Donnell, with Corporation Counsel, and folks over at Department of Labor Development, to see if we can get something on the books in real time that could make a difference, as opposed to just passing the buck, sending it up to Beacon Hill and having it languish up there. So that's our objective. So if we could keep that in committee for a little longer, that'd be great. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Does anyone else want to speak on that docket? Docket 0106 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0536 through 0543, orders for the FY '18 operating budget, including annual appropriations for the departmental operations, annual appropriations for the school department, and appropriations for other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, capital budget appropriations, including loan orders and lease and purchase.
Docket number 0536 through 0543 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0135, order for approving a petition for a special law regarding an act concerning insurance benefits for surviving spouses.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. We held a hearing yesterday. Joining me was our colleague, City Councilor Tim McCarthy, City Councilor Matt O'Malley, and City Councilor Anisa Asabi George. Very helpful to get the feedback from those that were in attendance, CFO Dave Sweeney on behalf of the administration, along with Rich Paris, President of Local 718, and also Bob Petiti and Mike Riley on behalf of 718. And basically, the proposal would amend Mass General laws so that surviving spouses of firefighters don't have to wait to remarry to have access to the health insurance. So it would basically be eliminating what they call the remarriage penalty. The legislature did it back in 2000 with respect to the pension. The last remaining piece of that was the health benefit side. And a good friend of everybody here was a crusader on that. That's Mike Mullane, who had recently passed. So in discussions, our colleagues raised the issue of the potential to look at not just our firefighters, but also our police and our EMS, but also all city employees, who could be in a situation where they were tragically killed or died in the line of duty. And to be able to have their spouse punished and their children punished, from my perspective, is just unfathomable. So we want an opportunity to work with CFO Dave Sweeney and the administration, Corporation Counsel, plus the firefighters and other city department lawyers, along with our attorney, Christine O'Donnell, to try to make some sense of being maybe able to not just eliminate the remarriage penalty for our firefighters, but also to maybe potentially eliminate the remarriage penalty for all city employees. So that's the goal and the objective here. We just need a little more time, so we're asking that we keep that in committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Docket number 0135 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Motion, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0701, Counsel Presley offered the following resolution, urging the state legislature to support proposed legislation to define dyslexia and address the special education needs of children.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank the parents, students, and advocates from advocating from so many organizations, including advocates from Decoding Dyslexia Massachusetts, who have raised awareness and engaged government time and time again on policies they know will improve outcomes for our students. I also want to thank our partners at the State House, the sponsors of these four pieces of legislation, Senator Barbara Lattalian, Bruce Starr, Representatives Alice Peish and Chris Walsh. Defining and screening for dyslexia in our Commonwealth is a bipartisan issue, and I think it is important that this body recognize and support these legislative efforts. The most important pieces of these pieces of legislation would codify definition of dyslexia for the entire state. Currently, students with dyslexia are categorized as specific learning disability, SLD. And according to a 2010 to 2011 annual report from DESI, 31.5% of special education students were categorized as specific learning disability, which translates to 51,900 out of the 164,711 students in special education in our Commonwealth. SLD covers a wide range of learning disabilities, and the lack of a definition for dyslexia specifically leads to local districts treating students with the same neurological diagnoses differently. And without a statewide definition or institutionalized early screening within our school districts, parents are usually responsible for finding an outside provider to diagnose their children. Now, like all learning disabilities, dyslexia requires specific support for specific students and parents to find the learning style and environment that will allow them to thrive. Early screening for a recognized and defined dyslexia can help put the right interventions in place, instead of waiting for a student to fail before we diagnose the problem. This resolution urges the legislature to consider the legislation currently before then and invites stakeholders and experts like Decoding Dyslexia Massachusetts to help to craft a policy that leads to greater supports for our students. I ask all of you for your support, and I would ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Baker as a cosponsor, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Linehan, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Zakem? Please add the chair's name. Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to extend a very passionate and excited thank you to the maker of this. I think this is a game changer for so many of our kids. And sort of embarrassed that I didn't think of it myself. I'm just so proud of this, and I think this is going to be- This is going to be, if we can get this through the state, and please count on my support, my voice, however I can support you in getting this through the state. This could be an incredible game changer for so many of our kids in the city of Boston. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Presley, did you have a second comment?
Oh, no.
Okay, sorry. Counsel Presley, at this time, moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0701. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Ayes have it, docket 0701 has been adopted.
Docket number 0702, Counsel Presley offered the following resolution, urging the legislature to pass House Bill 3659, an act establishing the Massachusetts Pregnant Workers Fairness Act.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I begin, just due to the fact that there has been momentum around this legislation, I didn't have the opportunity to formally invite my colleagues to co-sponsor officially. So I'd like to suspend the rules and to ask that Counsel Wu, Asabi George, and Campbell be added as co-sponsors.
Is there any objection? So added.
And I wanted to do that because we have been partnering on the issue of early education and care, and I do see these issues as going hand in hand. And moreover, two of our colleagues are expected. Thank you for signing on. And again, thank you for your accommodating the suspension of the rules. Given the momentum at the State House with the Joint Committee on Labor and Workforce Development, which recently favorably reported out House Bill 3659, an act establishing the Massachusetts Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. I want to thank the original sponsors of this matter in the legislature, Senator Joan Lovely, and Representative David Rogers, and the Women's Bar Association of Massachusetts for their advocacy to raise awareness and consciousness on this issue. I'd also like to acknowledge here in the halls of our building, want to acknowledge our administration, which did not need legislation to mandate these accommodations and these protections. The accommodations and protections outlined in the state legislation, we already have here on the city level, and I do want to acknowledge that. And these protections are common sense for the health, wellness, and productivity of mothers who are pregnant or nursing, as well as necessary for the well-being of the child. This bill clarifies existing requirements of employers to make reasonable accommodations for pregnant workers. It is not only about good public health practices, but also a good business decision to retain these women with talent in the workforce. And these reasonable accommodations are just that, reasonable. These include, but are not limited to, more frequent and longer paid or unpaid breaks, time off to recover from childbirth, temporary transfer- y'all might want to hear this one- to less strenuous or hazardous positions, private non-bathroom space for expressing breast milk, assistance with manual labor, and the ability to sit down. And this bill codifies that women who are pregnant cannot be retaliated against for requesting reasonable accommodations. We have heard so many stories about the discrimination that pregnant women have experienced in the workforce. This bill is aptly named. It outlines and codifies fairness for pregnant workers across the Commonwealth. I hope you all will support this resolution, and I ask that we suspend the rules and adopt this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
I want to thank- thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counsel Presley for her leadership on this matter. I also want to thank you, Madam President, as well as Counsel McCarthy for the legislation that we sponsored together around paid parental leave. This is common sense legislation, and I think it's important that men stand up and say that, and that we co-sign and also stand up and ensure that this actually passes. If we are truly going to be an inclusive city and state of Massachusetts, we need to lead and not follow in the space. These are not special accommodations. These are simply responsible accommodations for everyone in the workforce. This is the right thing to do, and it's absolutely high time that we did it. Please add my name. Thank you so much, Madam President.
And Counsel Presley.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Jackson's name. Please add Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Linehan, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Zakem. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Counsel Presley, for your work in this effort. Of course, I had to stand up and say I fully support this legislation. But I also applaud the city of Boston for the efforts they've made without having a mandate from the state. It is a common thing that we hear. I'm a former attorney that did labor and employment work from women who were pregnant, who faced difficulty in the workplace. So thank you for your leadership on this. Excited to sign on and be a co-sponsor, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. I will just add, sitting down is crucial, yes. So thank you, central staff, for this high stool up here, too. At this time, Counsel Presley moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0702. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0702 has been adopted. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0703, Counsel Wu offered the following order for the appointment-
Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 0703. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0703 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that there are two late filed matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Hearing none, the matters are added. And Madam Clerk, could you please- oh, one of which is personnel in nature. So Madam Clerk, could you please read the first late file?
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel Michelle Wu for Counsel Siomo.
Counsel Siomo moves for suspension and passage of the first late filed matter. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. First late filed has been passed.
City of Boston and the City Council, resolution of Counsel Timothy McCarthy, the National Emergency Medical Service Memorial. Madam President, would you like me to read first?
Yes, please.
Or I could read the whole bit.
First and last, first and last, that'd be great.
Whereas the National Emergency Medical Services Memorial Foundation was established on July 6, 27, with the sole purpose of designing and building and maintaining a permanent EMS memorial in Washington, DC, as the prestige of the nation's capital makes it the most appropriate site for a national monument. And therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council urges all Bostonians and residents of Massachusetts to recognize this meritorious work of EMS providers and to support this endeavor, and that the Boston City Council calls on all municipal, state, and federal elected- elected officials to actively support the National Emergency Medical Services Memorial Foundation in its effort to establish a national EMS memorial in Washington, DC, and that the Boston City Clerks send a copy of this resolution to the Massachusetts Congressional delegation, requesting their support and assistance in order to ensure that this well-earned and long overdue National EMS memorial be erected in Washington, DC, the capital of the United States of America.
Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That's pretty much everything I wanted to say. I want to thank Juan Lopez for helping me out with this resolution. Obviously, a two-pager is very, it's very thorough. I'm not going to read the whole thing. And I also wanted to thank Tony O'Brien, Boston's own EMS superhero behind us, who kind of flagged this, and I started doing some research on it and realized, I'm going to just put my notes away, you know, the emergency medical service, it's a crucial element in our nation's infrastructure and homeland defense. The men and women of the EMS are often our nation's first line of defense and prevention, mitigation of risk for terrorist attacks, man-made incidents, national disasters, putting their lives on the line every day. And when we visit Washington, DC, we have police memorials, we have fire memorials, we have every memorial from the beginning of the country until now, but EMS is not represented. So, I congratulate Congressman Stevie Lynch for putting this forth, and I encourage everybody to sign on, and I'm looking to have this suspended and passed today. And also, as the clerk had read, I'd really like to see other communities, selectmen and board of, and city councils throughout, jump on this to get some motion. And as a little bit of a sidebar, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, the EMS is going to be leaving here on a bike trip to DC. So, if you're around downtown, they'll be out, you're going to see Tony in bike shorts, which is a whole adventure in its own, and it'll be a fantastic day if you happen to be around. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to commend the maker, my dear friend, the District 5 Counselor, Tim McCarthy. Ask that my name be added. This is beyond long overdue. I am very proud to call Tony O'Brien a constituent and a friend, and many of you, I think all of us know Tony, and many of you remember, he was very famously attacked by a patient. In fact, there's a nearly 100% rate of paramedics and EMTs who are attacked by a patient at one point during their careers. It's nearly everybody. There have been 600 deaths of paramedics and EMTs who've died in the line of duty, and it's high time that we pray, pay proper homage and respect to these individuals. They truly are American heroes. Last year, I did a ride along with Boston EMS. There were 420 calls. I assumed it was 420 calls in a month. It was 420 calls in a 24-hour period. These are the unsung heroes, the men and women of Boston EMS, and the paramedics and the EMTs deserve nothing less than this. It's high time that we get this, huge commendation to Counsel McCarthy for starting this, that we should be the first city, they should spread across the country, and then by God, we should be able to secure this funding for a DC memorial. It's the right thing to do, and thank you, Tony, to your colleagues, the men and women of Boston EMS, for the legendary service you guys do each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor O'Malley's name. Please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Linehan, Counselor Presley, Counselor Zachem. Please add the chair's name. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. He's doubting the vote before we voted. Okay. I want to, I want to give the proper's, the well-deserved proper's to Counsel McCarthy for bringing this forward. This is very important, and I think we often forget that there have been years in the city of Boston when we've actually had an increase in shootings, but a decrease in homicides, and that is a testament to the amazing work of the men and women of the Boston EMS. I think we have the finest EMS system and individuals in the whole United States of America. But as Counselor O'Malley just noted, it is a dangerous job, and oftentimes EMS shows up so fast that they are there before other emergency services. So, it is important that we acknowledge them in the city of Boston and in our capital in the United States of America in DC, and I'd like to have my name added, and props to you, as well as Chief Houli, for the work that you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Jackson's name. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you. At first, I wasn't going to say anything, but then I said I had to. I want to applaud Counselor McCarthy for bringing this to our attention. I was unaware of this, so thank you. And Tony, thank you for your hard work, and like Counselor McCarthy has said, and Counselor Jackson as well, they work hard every single day. I did a ride along with Chief Houli, who was just incredible, and the patience they bring, often not speaking the languages of the people they serve, is incredible. They are patient, they are passionate, they are loyal to each other, and it's just great to watch. So, thank you, Counselor McCarthy, for doing this, and hopefully this picks up momentum fast, and thank you to Congressman Lynch for actually flagging this and taking the lead on it. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. At this time, Counsel McCarthy moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of the second late filed matter. All in favor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll for the second late filed matter?
Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counsel La Matina. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The second late file has been adopted with a 12 to 0 vote. Before we move on to the green sheets, Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Just rise for the purpose of asking for reconsideration with respect to docket 0701 and 0702 for the purposes of having my name added.
Any objection? No objection. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Flaherty's name to both docket 0701 and 0702?
Thank you.
Did you want to offer any further comment, Counsel Flaherty?
No, thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. And now, onto the green sheet, oh, onto the green sheets. Would anyone like to pull a matter from the docket? Hearing none, we will ratify the consent agenda, including one late filed matter, which will be added in the absence of objection. Hearing none, the matter is added, and Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted, and we will pause for statements or announcements. Counselor Jackson, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make a statement.
You have it.
Thank you so much. 'Tis the season. It is that time of year for my annual turkey fry block party, and you are all invited on May 27th from 1 to 5 p.m. for food, folks, and fowl, and we generally fry about 70 birds. We have a live band, and we have a wonderful time. So, all of my colleagues, as well as the folks viewing, it is a free community event, very fun time, and we do it with a purpose. We know that from Memorial Day to Labor Day is generally when we see the biggest spike in violence in the city of Boston, and I think it's important, and I want to, if he's not here, I want to give props to Counsel La Matina. I went to the street festival that he gives in his neighborhood, and it's just simply a good thing for people to get out their homes and to meet one another and to connect with neighbors, and really just engenders community and our city coming together, and I think that's a really good thing. And so, we, last year, had a little bit over 1,100 folks, our closest friends, and really look forward to a successful event this year. Again, you are all invited, and please book ahead for any wings or drumsticks, if that's what you like. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Linehan, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make a statement, Madam President.
You have it. Please proceed.
No, I just rise to wish all of your mothers-to-be, mothers who are, stepmothers, and the mothers, and spouses of all of us, and all the folks in Boston, with Mother's Day coming up on Sunday, wish you all well and hope you have a great day. All right? We can, anything you spend on Mother's Day, you can charge the Sal's campaign. That's all. Yeah. Have a great day.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor O'Malley, for purpose do you rise?
Counselor Linehan beat me to it. Well said. I agree. I ask for unanimous consent, just to reiterate what Counselor Linehan said to the four mothers of the Boston City Council. Happy Mother's Day to all of our mothers, you know, some of whom are with us in spirit and will always be with us in spirit. We love you. We owe all of our success because of the women in our life, the mothers in our life, and here's to the wonderful mothers of Boston and a very happy Sunday ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Okay, at this time, if all counselors and guests could please rise. And today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Siomo, Jesse J. Sidroni. For Counsel La Matina, Louise M. Taliere. And for Counsel Zachem, Julie Bradford. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and we're scheduled to meet again Wednesday, May 17th, at 12 noon. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Council is adjourned.[1709.63][1709.63]